What happened is this building would be converted. It'll be expanded. They'll add about 800 square feet to the rear. The service bays will be removed and they will be replaced by a convenience store. Along the way, there'll be significant site upgrade. There'll be refacing, modernizing of the facility. And in the end, it's going to look very nice. So, overall, quite an upgrade. The zoning on this is McComb Street District. Article 7 is the ordinance for that. We're reviewing this under Site Plan Review, Article 21. This is an approved application or approved use in McComb Street District, so it is simply a Site Plan Review. And under that Article 21 standard, we have a two-step process. The first is a pre-application, which happened at the last meeting where we exchanged ideas with the applicant, and the applicant went off and is now back the second time, this time for a decision. And I would expect the Planning Commission to vote on this tonight. The Planning Commission is the final decision-maker on this, so I expect that we will vote. That's it for the introduction. Brian, would you lead us off, please, with what's gone on in the last three, or four, or five weeks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As usual, you stole all of my introductory points, so I will gloss over the first slide here. I think we're all pretty familiar with the site at this point in time. We talked about it last month. Actually, this project was brought to you a year and a half ago originally. It was a little broader scope, a little more to it. A lot of the issues that were raised at that time have been mitigated by some changes to the proposed project. As Chairman noted, what they're proposing is all under the auspice of a permitted-by-right use. Therefore, all we need to deal with is Site Plan Review tonight. The gas station itself, the fuel pump component, would be a special land use, but that's already in existing use. No changes are proposed to that aspect of the project. So, what I want to do is just kind of take a look at the existing site conditions to give you some context for the discussion on the new site plan. So, really, what's happening here is a number of what I view as improvements to not only the site, but the building as well. Again, I know you're all familiar with the site. We have two overhead auto repair bays on the north side of the building. Those will go away as part of this project. The northeasterly portion of the site is really kind of just a hodgepodge of gravel, some grass, some weeds, some random wheel stops that are placed out there to prevent vehicles from driving in a full circle around the site. There's a dumpster, just a standalone dumpster, that is just sitting out on top of gravel right now. No enclosure, no containment, no screening, nothing to that effect. And then, in the southeast portion, is really just kind of a large, open, grassy area. Really doesn't contain any landscaping, at least on-site. There's one existing tree that appears to be in pretty good condition, but that's in the right-of-way, so that's not even on their property. So, again, just to give you some context for what we're dealing with, even the parking along the north side of the lot is a bit haphazard. It's not well-defined. It's not in great shape. This project will eliminate that condition, and really, I think, will get some nicer. This is the site plan as is proposed. So, building modifications, I'll show you the elevations momentarily, but internal, external, along with this 800-square-foot addition on the east side of the building. You can see, really, a cleanup of the established parking area. We have some new pavement. We have some curbing to actually protect vehicles from bumping into landscaping and provide some better definition in here. We'll get full circulation around the site as a result of this, which we do not currently have. Again, I don't know if you can see these little white lines in there, but those are little 12-inch-tall wheel stops, like we would see in a parking lot, that just literally block access from one side of the lot to the other. So, we're opening that up. We're dressing up what little green space does exist on-site. They are cramming in about as many plantings as you can possibly do and still keep them healthy. The spacing is pretty tight, but it does appear that with these sized trees, it should work. So, I think we're in good shape there. We have a dedicated dumpster within an enclosure and including the required concrete base pad, all of which are nice improvements from just a dumpster sitting in the middle of the yard. And then, some other things like we discussed last month, the one that really jumps out was the inclusion of some bicycle parking. So, we now have bike racks available for those accessing from the McComb sidewalk, as well as the Meridian Bike Path. So, in the far northwest corner of the site, we've eliminated a parking space and dedicated that as bicycle parking with, I think they're, both racks can hold nine bikes, is that correct? What the detail shows? Thereabouts. And that's the same over here as well. So, in the southeast portion of the site, we have the same rack. Details in the upper right. I know Commissioner Pollak is our bicycle, non-motorized guru, and I think this is the design style that we talked about last month that you were looking for. These tend to function pretty well, and they'll create a nice little aesthetic. They're not something that's super clunky. They're not going to really stand out or be an eyesore, and they'll function pretty well for the folks that wish to use them. But I think those are a nice improvement. And then, again, you can see, as far as the landscape enhancements, we've really tightened up the buffering on the north side of the property. There's also a wall on the other side of the landscaping on the multifamily parcel. So, I think, when all is said and done, we'll have a really nice buffer between, really, what is still a functioning gas station and a convenience store, but between that and some residential uses, I think we'll have a much improved buffer zone, which is really up to the standards of your ordinance, what we would require between conflicting land uses of that. The lighting plan also is compliant. There are new poles, new fixtures. Fixtures are all LED. They're all downward-directed, cut-off fixtures. Even new lighting under the canopies are flush-mounted, so we won't have the drop-down, bulky fixture like we used to see 10, 15 years ago. These are much improved, and the use of the LED, obviously, is a huge energy saver for them. And I think it'll create a little bit nicer, more consistent lighting on the site as well. There are a couple of poles. There's one on the McComb Street side, and then, the more obvious one is up in the northwest corner. There are a couple of poles that are pretty badly damaged at this point in time. The one on the Meridian side is, I won't say it's at a 45-degree angle, but how it's still standing, I'm not quite sure when I drove past it earlier. So, this will actually be a new pole in a new location that is pushed a little bit in from the property line, whereas the existing pole is almost right at, if not, it's actually pretty close to being in the right-of-way, quite frankly. But it appears that it's kind of right at the lot line. I'll go with that for now. So, this will be slightly relocated to help improve that situation, and then, obviously, we'll get rid of the poor condition of the existing poles. So, now, we'll look at the building. This looks substantially like what you saw last month. We're still looking at a building that's comprised of brick, stone, and ephesus along the upper portions. So, this is the brick you can see in here. We have the vertical stone accents, and then, we have the ephesus above the first-floor windows on this portion. This is, I'm sorry, this is the Meridian elevation view at the top of the screen, and then, this is the McComb view on the bottom of the screen. We've also, they've retained the canopies above the windows, and on the McComb side, they've extended the canopy as was requested at last month's meeting. Materials and design remain the same. Looking to the rear and the side, if you will, so this is the north side of the building. Not quite 50/50, a little more brick than ephesus, but you can see, this is the brick again. This is the ephesus on the upper levels. Still another vertical stone accent, and there is a window on this side that they've extended that canopy over. On the east elevation, this is all brick, and really, there's not much to it, but this isn't the most visible elevation either. This is a service entrance door. We had discussed last month about the inclusion of some faux windows to try to help break up this facade a little bit. They've done so. These two windows opposite the door here to the left, or what would ultimately be the south side of this elevation, are those faux windows like we had discussed last month. And then, the last picture is just the rendering, which is the same one that you saw last month. I did ask the project architect to bring in his sample board, so when he gets the podium, we'll let him show you the material and color samples again to demonstrate, again, how the building kind of fits in and how it all comes together. I do have a closing slide here. I think I've hit most of this, but, so, obviously, we're here tonight. We had pre-app last month. Petitioner, in my opinion, has addressed the comments that were presented to him. I think they've done a nice job cleaning the plan up. All the dimensional standards are met. All of the parking requirements are met, including the improvements that I referenced earlier. The new waste receptacle and enclosure is in an appropriate location with design standards up to current ordinance, which is a really nice improvement. I don't like to focus on dumpsters too much because they're a very small element of site design, but when they're done improperly, you can really see it. So, I think this is an important improvement for what that's worth. The lighting plan, again, more improvements there. I do see the existing condition as being somewhat poor, especially with those two poles that are nearly falling down. Not quite. Something's holding them up. I don't know what it is. But there's some nice improvements there. Landscaping, again, we have a number of improvements around the site. The one deficiency by conventional standard is the McComb Street green belt. And really, what's happening there is we have that enormous curb cut, and we have that huge swath of pavement, and within the small green area that exists on the McComb Street side, you just cannot fit all of the necessary trees for what that width of property would require as a green belt. So, I do view what they're doing as an improvement, albeit it's not fully compliant. But at the same time, they've provided some additional trees along that east buffer, and there's some additional evergreen plantings in lieu of shrubs along the north buffer. So, I think if you were to view it as kind of a trade-off, I think they've done a pretty good job with that. We did have one comment that didn't come up in my letter, but did come up at the meeting last month. I wanted to try to address that one real quickly. There is somewhere right about in here on the dry cleaner property, there is a ground sign. It's a little bit elevated, and I think what we'll ultimately want to do is make sure, I think this plan should work, and I'm not sure that it will actually block visibility of that sign, but I think what I'd like to do is, when we get to the point, assuming this gets approval, assuming it gets permitted, before the applicant is out there planting everything, I think it would be worthwhile to meet with them on-site and identify the appropriate materials and/or maintenance of those materials to make sure that their plantings are not blocking visibility of the dry cleaner sign. It could be something as simple as if these shrubs were allowed to just fully grow, and they ended up at six-foot-tall shrubs, they might block it. But if they're maintained and trimmed as a three- or four-foot-tall hedge, they might not block it. So, I think a few things like that, where if the commission is comfortable allowing us to work with the applicant, rather than having to tinker too much with the landscape plan, I think we could do something to that effect. And then, I would also suggest, it was also brought to my attention, some of the plantings in the northwest side that are off-site in the right-of-way. I thought that the ones in the center looked to be in pretty good condition. The ones on the north part, maybe not so much. So, what we'd like to do similarly is allow township staff to work with the applicant to make some needed improvements and repairs to the existing landscape in that area as well. This one's a little tricky because it's in the right-of-way. So, I want to make sure, you know, we don't go too far. If they rip everything out and then try to replant and reconstruct everything, they're going to need Wayne County approval to do so. If it's a situation where they can do some minor repairs and maybe some maintenance on what's there, perhaps that would be a little bit smoother process to work with through the township, you know, as well as potentially having to inform Wayne County of that. Another one that's kind of not a super tight idea at this point, but I think if you kind of get what I'm talking about, hopefully, you're on board with moving forward. Again, without forcing a number of requirements or revisions to the landscape plan as currently is proposed. Covered that. Real minor item, this was really the, one of the, the only hiccup I could find in the new submittal, was that the landscape plan, the planting table, shows canopy trees as two-and-a-half-inch caliper. Your ordinance requires a minimum three-inch caliper, so that needs to get corrected. That's a simple typo on the plan. It's really easy to correct. Building design and materials are consistent with MSD standards. All of the proposed materials are listed within MSD acceptable materials. And you've seen the design, especially in comparison, not only to what we have, but I think to, you know, to the use of brick, I think, is really important on McComb Street. The use of the canopies, the windows, especially along the two road frontages, I think those are all consistent with design elements we've promoted and wanted to see along the corridor as well. And my other comment was just tied back to those fuel pump canopies. Again, they're not proposing any changes to them at this time, but I want to make sure that at the formal review hearing that I at least put out there that if the applicant does want to make any changes to those, then there are review procedures that will have to be followed. If it's a simple repair or maintenance, it might be something that could be done administratively. If they're going to be torn down and rebuilt from ground up, it's probably something that'll have to come back to Planning Commission. So, not part of the proposal at this time, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to make the applicant and the public aware that additional approvals could be required if they chose to do so. And then, lastly, the plans were sent to both fire and engineering, but community development has not yet received any feedback from them. So, if you're to consider favorable action tonight, I would encourage you to include their approvals as a condition of your approval. Then that way, we'll make sure any engineering, I don't foresee any fire marshal issues, but I'm not in the business of making assumptions either. So, we want to make sure that both of those parties are satisfied, and if you incorporate that as a condition, then should be in pretty good shape moving forward. That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Nice summary. Thank you very much. Let's go to the applicant, Nasser. Welcome again to the Planning Commission.
Good evening. Nasser Shuker from NC Designers, 3241 South Telegraph, Dearborn, 48124. I believe Mr. Brian explained and talked about the site, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any concern about the material. I got a couple of samples for the brick, the color of the brick, and the stone. Ephesus is going to be like whatever it is in the rendering. It's an off-white. I'm going to say the ephesus, I would like to have the limestone color, but when you print the papers out, it does not give you that tone. But you know what's a limestone, so this is the color that we're going to be having, a little bit lighter than that when we use it with the ephesus. It's not going to be really dark.
Okay, so, let's take a look at the samples you do have, the brick and the, I think, the column, and then, the limestone isn't going to be the yellow you're saying. It's going to be the ephesus.
The ephus. It's going to be the limestone color.
Is that similar to what's on that?
No, that's the stone.
Okay, I mean, what is it?
It's too dark for...
So, it'll be lighter, it'll be lighter than that?
Yes. It's going to be like the picture, but not yellow.
But not yellow?
Yeah. The picture, the printer always gives it like a yellow.
Yep. Okay.
But it's the same color, but lighter than, it's not yellow. It's more into...
Earth tone, maybe? Is that what you're talking about? Grayish?
Yeah. It's more lighter.
Okay. All right. Does anybody want to see those samples? Dan?
Please tell me to bring them over.
That's okay. Okay. Very good. Well, thank you. Tell you what, why don't you just stay at the podium there, and let's see what commissioners have to say. We're going to start with Jay.
All right. Sir, I thank you for coming in again and for being... And so, we're appreciative of that and looking forward to the project. I did have one question for you. That was it. And it indicated, and this goes back to the canopies, it indicates on the plans, if I'm reading them correctly, brick around existing column?
Yes.
So, is that part of the, the existing columns don't have brick now, right?
No.
So, you're going to brick around the base of those columns, all the way up, or just get the...
Yeah, all the way up. That we clean up the free maintenance for the future, so you don't need to paint them white and these colors, you know? Because sometimes, you know, jobbers like mobile or shell, they require certain colors, and we don't like to put these colors on the, I mean, near the pumps. It's nice to have them like from brick, and if they want to put their imaging, they'll put it up on the top of the 30 inches that they have around the canopy.
Are there any other changes to the canopy or anything like that?
Not really. If there is any, the gutters, they have to be like replaced, so we'll have better drainage. And the lighting, it's going to be flush mounting lighting, LED, and they would look nice.
Okay. I just want to state my appreciation and looking forward to the project getting underway. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Jay. Steve?
Follow-up on that question from Jay. When you start to work on those canopies, does that trigger anything in regards to codes that now they have to meet certain codes when you're starting to work on them or change part of their lighting structure?
Brian? Lighting, I mean, the lighting and the brick are covered as part of the site plan review, the building code, building official address, whatever he needs to from a construction standpoint. Usually, they're just facing around those in brick. I wouldn't envision it's anything...
Trying to avoid this coming back.
Yeah, no, I don't see that being the case. My concern was if they were going to come down and be rebuilt, if they were going to be altered in size and scope, those types of things, or if they were going to be expanded, that's where I want to make sure that the applicant was aware. Simply putting brick around the existing columns and the new, I mean, the new lighting as well, I mean, I just view those as part of the site plan.
I can add something. Normally, I mean, normally, when we touch the canopy, the size of the canopy, then we need an approval. Always, always, in most of the cities, we re-brick, I mean, actually, we break the columns. We change the island to stainless steel, nice with concrete. It would be nice and clean, you know, for trip hazard. Or if they change the pumps themselves, they put the obation pumps, which are really expensive with nice screens. Normally, people, they don't want to put them in an old island, you know, with the cracked concrete and stuff. So, we take it all out.
I'm just trying to avoid it coming back another time. So, I just wanted to make sure, be here again and yet delayed more. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Now, let me make sure I understand. You're not changing the pumps, though, right? Or are you?
Sometimes, sometimes the pump itself, if we have a new model, we'll just put the new model pump.
Okay. So, Brian, a pump change at this point, is that...
I wouldn't think that would trigger anything from a site plan perspective. I mean, at that point, because it's a fuel pump, we'd want to make sure that, obviously, building and probably the fire marshal looked at it, but I think you have to go through the state to do that anyway, too, so...
This is all state requirement.
Yeah, they'll be, I mean, they'll be covered there from a safety standpoint, certainly.
Well, that does prompt a question. If, you know, some of these pumps that are the modern pumps are noisy, okay? You know, at all hours of the night, they're broadcasting an advertisement at you. Is that what...
Actually, these are really very expensive pumps to put the TV, you know, the TV screen, and they do advertisement. What I meant, the pumps that, we call them obation pumps, they're really, it's a big screen and touch. It would be the words, and when you put your card, you'll see everything. It's not like the little screen that you want to...
Okay, so, it's not one of these that's broadcasting big advertisement at you that...
No, 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 no.
I'm thinking about the sound at 10 o'clock at night or something like that.
No.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, let's go down to Brian.
Again, I want to echo Jay's comments about, thank you for all of the input that you give us, and you, they're reflected within the existing plans over here, so we greatly appreciate that. One other question about the canopy, and I'll let that die afterwards, just wondering about, you know, you were mentioning that when various, you know, fran, I'm not sure if I have the right word over here, but franchisers, you know, decide that they want to come in potentially change it. So, does the color of the canopy change, or just with the potential of the sign actually come down? I'm just thinking that we already have a sign, you know, more of a monument sign, you know, farther on the ground, but there's a sign that's on the canopy itself. And then, with the contrasting blue that is there right now, I know, you know, looking at the rendering, it really is a stark difference between what's on the building, the improvements you've done to the building versus, you know, seeing the blue on the canopy itself. So, it's just more of a question rather than, you know, anything that, you know, I was, you know, I don't think that it's pertinent right now, but it's just more food for thought on that.
It's the, I mean, the owner of this gas station, he's a mobile jobber. He's not going to, even, it's his, and he lives on the island, so he's not going to give it or lease it to anybody. It's his own gas station. He's not going to change the image or lease it or give it to anybody. But in terms of if, let's say, in 10 years or 15 years, someone else gets this gas station, and they want to make it a shell, under the code and the ordinance, they can change the faces only, but they cannot touch the structure unless they get an approval from the city. And either it goes through you guys, or it goes administratively approval if it's less than 10% changes or things like that. So, regarding the canopy, it's only going to be like the, I think they put vinyl and some, sometimes some lighting, and this is as per required from the jobber that they're bringing. If there is any, I mean, extra stuff like lighting or like shell, they have like these lighting canopies around it, then it requires, and again, it requires a building permit to put these lighting or fixtures. And that would trigger if they're allowed to do it or not through planning.
Okay, thank you. I do have two other questions, and they both relate to the driveways. So, I was wondering, are you planning on doing any, you know, changing of the pavement at the driveways themselves, so either on the Meridian side or on the McComb Street side?
If any, if any repair is required for this driveway, if they're busted, and of course, we're not going to leave them the same, and we're going to pull permits and do the repairs either from the city or Wayne County. So, anything is damaged, we are doing all this construction. We're not going to leave something a little like this.
One thing I would suggest, based on the sidewalk that's going over the driveway on the McComb side, I know it's going over a driveway, but we want to ensure that the cross slope of that sidewalk is 2% or less from an ADA standpoint. Make sure that somebody's in a wheelchair, they're not going to go down into the streets when crossing over that area. Additionally, if there's a way to kind of show the sidewalk coming through, rather than having the, it look like the driveway is the prominent movement, that's especially good in a downtown area where we're trying to promote walkability. So, again, you know, maybe the material that we're using for the sidewalk is carried through, but there's a contrasting material for the driveway apron or for the parking lot, so, you know, you definitely see the sidewalk cutting through that area. And same thing for the driveway on the Meridian side, because you have the bike path coming through. It'd be nice to have, you know, again, showing the bike path, having the material coming across the driveway versus the driveway material coming across the bike path. Additionally, as I mentioned before, that I've been told, you know, there is some drainage issues with that southern driveway, I guess it would be the southwestern driveway, and so, like, the water can back up, and it can come up, and that, the travel area over, of the bike path over that driveway is cracked up a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Dan?
I'd like to point out a few of the improvements that I've noticed since the last time it was brought before us. One of the improvements is added windows and also the sunshade slash canopy element that was added on the McComb elevation. I like those additions just because this is one of the few buildings on McComb Street that essentially has two fronts. It's facing Meridian and it's facing McComb. So, I was glad to see those additions there, so that doesn't appear like the back of the building. Also, on the east side, there was also a few faux windows added over there. Again, kind of helping get away from any appearance of having a back of the building downtown. One of the other improvements I noticed was the bike racks that were added, added on the east side of the building, and also... One of the other improvements I noticed was the bike racks that were added, added on the east side of the building and also on north side of the building. And I'm hoping from a safety standpoint that'll encourage our girl's wheel bikes lists to park their bikes by the bike rack and try to keep them out of traffic here right in front of the building. And I was glad to see that these comments, comments that we made were addressed. And I'm looking forward to see some improvement. I think this building is definitely due for an improvement and I'm excited about the project.
Thank you, Dan. Jim?
Hi, I just wanted to say I appreciate the improvements that you've made and I'm looking forward to the project beginning. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Uta?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm also very much looking forward to seeing the project come to fruition. And I think you've been very open and amenable to the suggestions that this body has made. I don't want to really be sounding like a nitpicker, but I do have a nitpicky thing. So Beaumont Hospital is building a patio garden area in one of its courtyards. And it's right outside my office window and I've been watching. And this happened today, as a matter of fact. They're digging and there's about two inches of topsoil they've brought in and the rest is rock hard clay. And so I'm watching the guy pound in, you know, and he gives up and, you know, they just kind of shove the plant in there, throw some milorganite around it and leave it. As a gardener, I know that plant isn't going to last very long. And I think we've all been by commercial buildings where trees have been planted that, you know, kind of struggle to survive. So I'm just hoping that your landscapers recognize that the soil in this area is very clay and very hard and that they, as you show in the drawings, do give the trees enough space that they can grab root. Years ago, when we were doing improvements at Centennial Farm, we actually required the volunteers to make, I think, a three-year commitment to actually maintain and take care of the plantings. Now, I don't think we have that requirement here, but I think the spirit of that, if we can ask that, you know, your landscapers and the owner just kind of make sure you're planting some fairly sized trees and they will look very nice. But they'll probably need some TLC to survive the first couple of years. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Uta. Well, this is an important project. You know, the opposite side of the, of Macomb, we have the beautiful area there for the park type setting, which the township invested a great deal of money in because it was one half of the entrance to our, to our business district. And now with this project, we now have the other half of the entrance to the Macomb Street Business District. And I think this is an excellent project and I think you do great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On that note, I would entertain a motion. Who would like to make a motion regarding this project? Brian, would you please specify the content, desired content, and then we'll see who will make that motion?
Sure. So I think what we're looking at is a motion to approve the site plan for the proposed improvements at, I don't know what the... Two four three oh five.
Two four three oh five.
Thank you. Meridian, including the following conditions. The applicant will work with the township to maintain visibility for the signage on the adjacent property to the east. The applicant will work with the township to ensure plantings in the northwest portion of the site are maintained and improved as necessary. One I forgot to mention earlier that was in my notes. The applicant will maintain clear vision at the Macomb driveway. That's where the new plantings are proposed. We want to make sure that those hedges, similar to the dry cleaner sign, we want to make sure those hedges don't get too tall so as to block visibility. The applicant will correct the landscape plan to show minimum three-inch caliper canopy trees and subject to approval by the township engineer and fire marshal.
Okay, so those, that's the content. Who would make a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make a motion.
Jim has made the motion. Is there support?
Support.
Support from... Dan? Yes, somebody. Who was it?
Dan.
Dan? Okay, I couldn't hear. All right, any other discussion? Call to question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Very good. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll look, we'll look forward to seeing the changes.
Mr. Chair, just two quick follow-up points on that just before we move on. Just, I want to make sure everyone is on the same page. So some of the comments that Commissioner Pollock made with respect to the slope and the drainage on the Macomb Street side, those will obviously be part of what CE Rains will be looking at within their review. So I want to make sure that I didn't add that as a condition explicitly, but I want you to make sure that that will be covered by the engineering approval. And then to make Uta feel a little bit better on the plantings. Your ordinance does, does require that landscaping that is required as part of a site plan approval has to be maintained. So, good, he's still here. So should, should those trees die, become diseased, et cetera, they will need to be replaced. So this isn't just a, you know, they're good for one year and then we can just let the whole site fall into disrepair. They do have to keep that landscaping up as shown on the approved site plan.
Okay, let's move on. I asked Brian to give us an update on where we stand relative to the Bayview zoning question. This is an issue that we've been talking about, I suppose now for about six to nine months, give or take. It was, it was a thought that came from ZBA relative to the fact that many of the conditions on the Bayview side of Hickory Island are similar to the R1F district zoning standards that we created specifically for the opposite side, the Hickory Island Company portion. And there was a suggestion made to us that we take a look to see if, given those physical similarities, if a modification of the zoning might mitigate some of the, some of the excessive amount of having to go to the zoning board of appeals to, to make it, make the zoning more consistent with what physically happens to be there to help the neighborhood. So on that note, we've, you know, Brian collected a variety of statistics that we've looked at in the past and laid out what some of our options might be. Brian, would you, would you talk to us now about this a little bit? We're not to the point of taking any, any action on this. This is all still in the study phase.
Yeah, so what I've done is I've started drafting the actual amendments. I didn't feel they were ready for presentation to the full group this evening, so that's why you didn't receive anything. And that's why I'm just showing you some bullet points as opposed to handing something out tonight. What I wanted to do is kind of just let you know the direction I'm headed and then put forth what I think will be kind of our schedule to get this thing back on track and just get it completed so that we're, we're done and I can cross this off my list and you all. So what I'm looking at is text amendments to three distinct sections of the ordinance. The first is very simple. This is the section 3.1, which is the intent of the residential zoning districts. There's a separate paragraph for R1F. Right now, it reads very specific to East River and Hickory Island. I don't believe it goes so far as to call it the Hickory Island Company, but it's, in essence, that's what the reference is to. I want to make sure that we, if we're gonna expand this to the other side, I want to make sure that the reference includes the waterfront properties along Bayview. Very simple, but I think it's, for the sake of consistency and avoiding confusion, five, 10, 20 years from now, people will understand, if none of us are still in this room, people will understand what we were trying to do. The biggest one really is, is under the Schedule of Regulations or the area and the bulk standards for single family and specifically for the R1F. So this is really where I'm trying to reconcile the existing language of the ordinance with the conditions of Bayview. You'll recall the last time I had all of those tables that I probably overwhelmed you guys with, but we're looking at every property, every point of non-conformity. And the one I'm struggling with the most is the, is really the waterfront side setback because the current language for R1F was again expressly written for the Hickory Island side or for the East River side, to make that a little clearer. And the way that association applies their shoreline setback is a different model than what we use on the rest of the island and something that will not work on the Bayview side. What they do on the East River side is, it's one of two things. There's kind of a window within which they can build out to that's dependent upon the existing line of the adjacent homes on the waterfront side, but also takes into account a measurement from the street front all the way back to, I think it's, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but it's 200 or 210 feet or something to that effect where you can't go beyond that line. Obviously, having that type of an application on the Bayview side just doesn't work. So I'm still trying to find a way to have one zoning district with two different sets of waterfront setback standards, which doesn't sound that difficult when I say it that way, but it's, getting the verbiage right is a little tricky. So that's really where kind of the, the attention to detail needs to be completed. And that's, that's really kind of what I'm working on now. The other text portion is under accessory structures. One of the similarities between the East River side and the Bayview side, obviously, is the street front detached buildings. The ones on the East River side tend to be a little bit bigger. They're more, they're all garages essentially. They're a little bit closer to the street front lot line. The ones on Bayview, about half of them are just sheds. They're storage buildings, outbuildings, not necessarily intended for garage structure. So I'm trying to navigate kind of the size and the placement regulations that are in place for the East River side. Because East River, right now, you can go to a three-foot side yard setback. I'm not sure we want to do that on the Bayview side. And you have to have, I think it's a minimum 15-foot street front setback on the East River side. And I feel like we probably want to maybe be a little bit larger than that on the Bayview side to try to mimic kind of that existing condition. If you just think about driving up and down either of those roads, when you drive down the East River side, garages are very prevalent. They're right up there, they're very close to the, the street front. On the Bayview side, they're prevalent, they're not quite as big and they're not quite as close. So I don't want to write in something that's gonna open the door for a bunch of structures that start to impact the character of that roadway. I think you've all understood that from day one, we're trying to write a regulation that's consistent with the character, but not open up the doors to really alter that character. So that's another one that I'm, I'm working on, that I'm probably pretty close to having that one done as well. And then as far as the full package that will get presented to you, that would also include an amendment to the zoning map. So we'd be taking those, I forget how many, 15, 20 waterfront properties on Bayview and we would be changing the zoning from R1B to R1A to this new updated R1F. So the package that you'll ultimately get as a draft amendment will include amendments to those four particular sections of the ordinance. I think I've whittled it down to just those four and I don't think there's anything else I need to touch at this point in time. If there is, obviously, I'll keep you updated. So that's where I am with it. It's, I probably should, I should be done with it by, certainly by the next time you meet, I'm thinking within a month. So if we have a July meeting, I think I'll be ready. If we skip a July meeting, I'll be ready for whatever the next meeting is. But what I wanted to put forth was kind of my idea of sort of how we kind of get there and finish this thing off. So I would like to finish the amendments and then present as a, just a discussion draft to the commission so that I get your feedback. And then we had always talked about, from, from really day one of this project, we had talked about some public input forum. So exactly how that is or what that is at this point, I don't know yet. But that could be something we discuss when we go over sort of the, the discussion on the draft at your next meeting, whether we want to have some type of a workshop, whether we want to do it as part of a regular meeting, whether we want to just go into the neighborhood and try to set something up to meet with the residents or whether we invite them to come to us. A lot of different ways that we can approach it. But I definitely think that it's in all of our best interests to do that before this thing comes up for eventual public hearing. I want to make sure the residents, A, understand what we're trying to do and that B, they're generally acceptable to it. We don't want to force anything down their throats. At the end of the day, we're trying to eliminate some of their non-conforming situations, which should be viewed as helpful. But I want to make sure that they see it that way, too, because it's their property and ultimately it affects them. So that's kind of where I'm going with that. I think that, you know, again, depending on, we get into next meeting dates here shortly. Depending on when we set that next meeting date, I think that will start to kind of knock the dominoes down of how we finish this off. So if we, if we meet in July, I think these are kind of like monthly steps, quite frankly. So July, August, September for these three steps or August, September, October to get to public hearing, however we want to do. We'll definitely have this thing wrapped up by winter of this year, one way or another.
Very good, Brian. Let's see if there are any questions or comments from anybody. Do you have any questions for... Okay.
Um, hopefully I didn't say obviously, but, okay, I may have. It's a good word. So the, the street front, my, my view of the character of the street, of the two, two streets is a bit different. And that is, I feel like the East River side, they're much closer to the street front than they are on the Bayview side. So that 15-foot setback that's allowed on East River, I think is probably not quite enough on Bayview. I think we would want to increase that. Oh, the waterfront setback. Yeah, well, that's because that's, that, the way it's put in our ordinance is as it reads in the association bylaws. It's very explicit to the East River side. And I don't, I don't know that I would feel comfortable trying to apply that. Those, the folks on East River are bound by their association rules either way. We don't enforce them, obviously, but they're bound by those as well as our ordinance requirements. I don't know that I would want to open the door up for that on the Bayview side. On the Bayview side, I would be much more comfortable simply using our predominant average shoreline setback like we do everywhere else on, on the island.
Okay, so the, just so I understand, the obviously wasn't that it wouldn't practically work there. It's that it's something we generally don't do and wouldn't have done...
It's something that really only applies to those East River Hickory Island properties. And I'm not sure, you know, I'd have to go back and look. I'm not sure that those properties on Bayview are deepened. I think, I think we'd be allowing building much closer to the shoreline if we were to open it up to some type of a different determination. Whereas right now, and as we've always done, we've simply applied that predominant average shoreline to try to keep things generally in line and not allow one person to, to build out and block off somebody's view.
Other questions or comments for Brian? I just have a couple. You know, when we, you're very, you're very right about the communication with the Bayview residents. You know, that was very easy for us to change at Hickory Island because we were dealing with an association. And the association represented that group of citizens and those, that group of property owners. There is no such organization on the opposite side. So, you know, we're gonna have to, have to really step forward to try to, to try to reach people to communicate. And so, you know, that's gonna be a challenge, but it's one we have to do.
No doubt.
Second thing was, you know, listening to your discussion on section 3.5 in 1911, made me think maybe, you know, by trying to fit it into the R1F district, would we be better off creating an R1G district? And simply tailoring, pulling in those elements from the R1F district that do fit and then exactly writing what the Bayview side requires? Would that be simpler and, or less complex to understand? I mean, I, I think the district is big enough, no one would accuse us of spot zoning.
Oh, sure. No, we, that, that doesn't concern me. I guess I was, I'm trying to keep it as simple as possible. If I find myself running into a brick wall, then what I think I would like to do is reach out to the ordinance subcommittee, let you all know that, and then we could maybe think about just writing up a new district on its own. I don't know that it's, I don't know that they're that different, that it warrants a whole new district, I guess, if that, that makes sense. I think they're, they're close enough, it's just these fine tuning, these, these little details where, again, I want to make sure... details where, again, I, I want to make sure that we don't write something in where we end up with these unintended consequences.
Devil is in the detail, for sure.
Exactly. So, so if you're okay with that, I, I certainly, that crossed my mind. I was trying to not have to create a whole new district, again, just for these, you know, 15, 20 properties. But if it becomes too cumbersome or if it becomes too confusing, quite frankly, if I have footnotes all over the place and I have a distinction here and a distinction there and I have too many of those, then I think we probably would want to just create a new district. But if I can keep those to the bare minimum, I think we can, I think we can.
Okay. The last comment is, is, you know, before we present that draft amendment to the PC, I think the ordinance committee definitely needs to sit down with you in either case, you know, just to kick it around a little bit and make sure that, that our subcommittee has, has a good sense of it before we bring it forward. Okay?
Absolutely.
So add that as a step, step one, if you would.
Done.
Okay. No other comments on that? We'll move to the chair's report, which basically is the next meeting date. How do we stand for applicants? Anything out there that is, is pending?
Not at this time.
Okay, and we have not heard back from the change on the plumbing shop to a pastry shop?
Met with the owner, met with their representative, laid out a whole host of options for them and left the meeting really not knowing, I guess, where they were moving next. I think my meeting with Kurt again on Wednesday. So I do have, my, my office hour days are Wednesday, so I do have another meeting with the representative of the owner. I don't think he scheduled it for that project purpose, but obviously, it's an opportunity to, to talk.
Well, then on that basis, I would say we, we time our work, our next meeting, to be able to proceed systematically with this. We typically don't meet in July, you know, take a month off. I would suggest maybe the third, let's see what the dates are, the third Monday in August, 21st? How does that sound for everybody?
It's fine for me.
Anybody around town? Okay? Brian, how's that look to you?
Should be fine.
Okay, let's kind of pencil in the 21st. And if anything comes up to change that, you know, Lori will let us know promptly and we can, we can adjust accordingly. Anybody have any other concerns or issues you want to bring up? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, support, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.